To call to order the public meeting, May 11th, Cus Middle School. Roll call Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Here.
Salute to the flag. My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input. Do we have any citizens input, Deb? No one signed up tonight. First item on the agenda, school choice, out of district students in grades six to twelve for the 2021 school year. Any comment on this issue?
My comment would be-
Anyone like to speak on this?
My comment would simply to be proceed in the manner in which we've operated the last several years.
We just got a note for the record that no one was here and close the hearing.
Yeah, no, no one came to speak on school choice at all.
All right.
Motion to adjourn the hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Ed.
We have one more item. Do we have to vote to approve that, Bruce?
No, not, not, just close the discussion with respect to that.
Okay, second item. School choice for non-resident students in grade K-5 for former public schools employees consistent with collective bargaining agreements for the 2021 school year. Anyone want to talk on that topic?
Respectfully request that the committee maintain the current status of that program in procedures we have the last few years.
Any further discussion? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, my motion to adjourn is in a second. I'm going to close the public hearing on school choice. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show me.
Second.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Brief recess. For the school committee, May 11th, Cus Middle School. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
She did.
No, Mimi.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Any citizens input, Deb? No one signed up for citizens input, and we don't have any recognition awards tonight. Superintendent Malone, your report, please.
Yes. So, we are now in phase three of our school closure operations. Today we began distributing Chromebooks at all school sites, also collecting work. Assistant Superintendent Ponce points out that we perceive quite a bit of student work, so we want to say thank you to all the students and families who worked so hard the last two months completing work. We'll be distributing the equipment and materials this week, and we've begun to use the online virtual learning that is now being used across the state, delivering a set of power standards. I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on our team, our task force, led by Ms. Ponce, in partnership with labor unions, FRAA and FREA, central and site-level people, did a great job. One of the things that's unique about where we are right now, we're also looking at end-of-year activities, and right now, we're planning, and you've probably heard about other school systems that are doing this right now, but we're looking at a hybrid, a blended model, to have some sort of graduation on the actual date of Dirfee graduation, which would allow us to have both a virtual and in-person component. So, we're working out the details now. Principal Damaris and his team are looking at the logistics, and I'll have more information to share, but there's been several of these that are already receiving a ton of attention, and ours will be within the same vein as those of what you've read. Finally, the Dirfee construction project, we continue to move. We've turned over, if you've been by the site, the whole Elsbree Street entrance is now part of the construction project as they finish some of the work underground there, connecting the fieldhouse with the street. You can see the roof is being put on, the pool's being framed, a lot of demo going on in the fieldhouse. We got some inspections that passed for the MEP inside, and the walls are going up and the ceilings are going in. You'll soon see windows start to be installed, and then you can see today, the exterior brick work, the masons have now moved around to the front of the building along Elsbree Street, and they'll start doing the brick work in the front of the building. I'll also say Suffolk and Left Field and AI3, that done, in the city, have done a great job ensuring that we're practicing safe construction operations. Everyone's wearing the proper PPE, and you can't even get on the site without getting a temperature check, and you have to have masks and gloves, and it's really tight, and I want to say thank you for all the folks that have done a great job ensuring that our construction workers are operating safely. With that, that ends my superintendent's report.
Question?
Mr. Agia?
Just on the drive-through graduation piece, what is that, like, I know you talked about getting us more info, but if the government doesn't say that you can't have an in-person thing, isn't that going to cause, cause a problem, and what do we do in that case?
Yeah, so we're waiting for the guidance. Today's press conference with the governor, they said they'll be releasing more guidance over the next week or so. So, the good news is we have a little time, and we'll keep playing it as the information comes out, and we'll plan from there.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would be, if it can't happen, then to move it back a couple of weeks even, something just to give us more time. We want to give the kids the best they can, but at the same time, you can't have an organized event, having 500 kids show up at one place at one time, I think, so.
Yeah, so this wouldn't, we're going to space it out anyway, so it's going to be hourly, certain numbers of kids each hour, we stretch it out for the entire day.
And you'll get us something on that, because I don't think we meet again between now and then.
Yeah, I'll get you information, but in terms of the committee's role in that, it's really just sharing information here and practice.
So, we don't have any role in deciding, making a decision about the type of graduation or anything like that?
No, it's not a policy decision. You do give out diplomas, and that's in the policy book.
All right, no, my, my impression was that it always was a school committee, you know, when we have to, we used to have to vote, back in the old days, whether it was indoors, outdoors, Friday, this date, like, different types of things, but if you're saying that we don't-
Well, you, you do vote a date, and so that's already been voted, and, you know, that's all part of the calendar.
I'm sure you're going to do the best you can. I'm not, I'm not saying you're not.
Yeah, we're going to, I'll hopefully have something written for you by the end of the week as a, as a skeleton of where we are.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, we'll get it out to the, to the committee, and again, your committee's advice and opinions are always well-received on, on all these things.
I yield.
Mimi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Malone, I just wanted to give a little shout-out, actually a big shout-out to Matt Damaris and his faculty and all the volunteers who went, looked to get the Dirfee senior signs out in a timely fashion. The kids were very excited, the parents were very excited, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for making that happen. I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Superintendent, you said that you handed out the Chromebooks to students?
We, we started to, it was the first day.
Started to?
Yeah.
And obviously, these, these are the folks, the students that don't have the, that did, that were receiving the packets at first, right? And now they're receiving the Chromebooks to do their online work at home?
Everyone received packets in the first two phases, but, yeah, we're using the honor system as to, if you do not have a device, we'll provide one for you. If you have a device, you don't need one.
Okay, so how many were handed out this week?
Today is Monday, I don't know.
How, how many were handed out today? I'm sorry.
About 500 on day one.
And how many do not have, have access to the Wi-Fi at home?
Based on the survey data that we share with the committee, of those who turned in the surveys, we believe around 4,000 families lack devices, or 4,000 students would lack devices, and we're looking about, of those who filled out the survey, about 20%, 18% to 20% did not have connectivity to the internet. So, that's the real challenge for us, is the connectivity part. We've been working with our providers around perhaps helping speed up some distribution with Verizon, which comes with hotspots, but we're going to continue to work with families as that information becomes more and more concrete.
And do you, what, what, what is your, I guess, maybe guess, guesstimate, guesstimation as to when the students will have, the 3,500 or 4,000 that do not have that, when do you think they'll be getting that access?
Access, do you mean to internet access, or do you mean access to devices?
Both, so they can do their work at home, like the other students.
Right, so we, we're not providing access to internet, we're providing the access to the devices, so-
Okay, so, devices, Superintendent?
Yeah, so, we gave out 500 today, I mean, hopefully we'll do more tomorrow.
Okay, so when do you think that all of them will have the, the equipment to do their work remotely at home?
I don't think all will ever have. We've got about 97%, so, that we've had connections with families, so I'm assuming, hopefully by Friday, I'll probably have the large majority out.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Superintendent, just so I have it correct, is it 18% or 20% of the 4,000 students, or roughly 4,000 students, don't have connectivity?
18% to 20% of the 7,000 filled out the survey.
Of the 7,000, okay. I just didn't know, the 18% to 20%, what, if that was of the 4,000 that don't have a device, or, so of the 7,000, obviously some have devices but don't have access to internet, and then some don't have a device or access.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Kev?
Just another question on one of the documents we got related to the enrollment update, and I don't think there's any other time, so that's the reason why I'm bringing it up now. Earlier in the year, the, I think the public health, the nurses are helping the public health in the city, on the, doing some of the city work. My belief is that the school resource officers also should be doing the same, helping the city on the city side, because the city's down, there's sworn officers and all that stuff, but I see in here that it says they're doing welfare checks and connections with attendance officers. Do we have, like, how does, how do we police, no pun intended, but, how do we know what they're really doing, you know, all day, and would they be better served working for the city, trying to keep the city safe and fill in for guys that are out versus whatever they're doing all day?
Well, our, our SROs are on the job with us every day, and they're doing all the things that they're supposed to be doing, so I got them at sites, doing safety and security, I got them doing meal distribution, doing wellness checks with families, I mean, so they're doing, and we have several active investigations with them as well, so, I mean, they're working, and, you know, in terms of the accountability part of that, it's, it's through Ken, to the SRO sergeant, and their boss, and, who's, I believe, lieutenant, and, and that's how we're getting the accountability as to what they're doing.
So, it would be safe to say that any principal that would want assistance from their SRO received it for the duration of the time that we've been out of school, or is there problems with that situation, or do we not know?
Well, I mean, if a principal needs SROs, they have them, and the SROs are in their buildings, but they're also, you know, the same way we operate during the year, there's assigned to a couple of different buildings, except for the high school, too, and we got them moving around.
Yeah, I mean, I personally will ask that you check on that, to be sure that they're getting the support, the schools are getting the support that they need when it's requested of a school resource officer.
So, if I had a problem, I'd probably let you know, so I'm going to tell you, I don't think I have a problem right now with my SROs, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay, so then I'm going to tell you, back just the same, that you need to check on it, because the fact of the matter is, is that all schools are not getting good access to school resource officers assisting whenever a principal wanted it. It's not happening across the district, so all I'm asking you is to check it out.
We can check it out, Kevin, but I don't know where you're getting your information. So, that's, I mean, if you have a, if you have a question about SROs, you've asked it.
So, that's the first thing, so I ask you to check it out. Secondly, it's my opinion that they should be working for the city to help the city, because the city is down police officers. So, has there been a request from the city to move those guys into it, and has that been denied, or has it not even been talked about?
Well, there's been no request, but we're paying the freight to the SROs, so they work for us.
Yeah, so we have SROs that are working for us, although the city has a shortness, a short-staffed police department, and we don't think that trying to work cooperatively with the city would be to have those people working in the streets, and when we need them, we call them for the very limited-
Kevin, you're asking a lot of hypotheticals that no one's brought to my attention, so as far as you bringing this up tonight, no one else has ever said a thing to me about any problems with the SRO, so I'll look into it.
Perfect.
If the committee wants a report, I'd gladly give them a report on what SROs are doing. That's not a problem, but in terms of the specifics that you raised, I haven't heard a thing.
I just think it's, it's somewhat common sense, if you have an eight-hour day, and there's no kids in schools, what do you do, you know, there's probably better things that those SROs could be doing, helping the guys that are on the streets, people are out on, on quarantine in the police department, just filling in as support for the police department, to me, would be better served for the greater good of the whole city. But with that, I yield, and thank you for looking into it, appreciate it.
Josh?
Yeah, on the SRO topic, I think it's actually, I don't agree with my colleague over there, I think that we absolutely need them for the health and wellness checks at the houses, because the tenants' offices don't have the level of access necessarily that an SRO might when they knock on the door. I think it's imperative that we do have SROs at our disposal in order to do these wellness checks. We know there's 3% of the students we haven't even gotten in touch with, and we may need those SROs for that, so that'd be my concern. I do want to help the city, the city needs help, too, I agree, let's just try to help if we can, but we also need SROs, so I just wanted to make that comment, but that I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? No student comment or student delegate report tonight, and before we move into the approval of the minutes, I'd just like a moment of silence for longtime former city councillor Tom Kozik, who passed away this week, and another prominent member of the community, John Long, who also passed away. With that, approval of the minutes, 3:20, Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Ed.
Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next, 3:30, 20, Special Meeting of the Farver School Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next, 4:90, 20, Facilities and Operations Subcommittee meeting minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next up, 4:13, 20, Public Hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And finally, 4:13, 20, Regular Meeting of the Farver School Committee.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have no travel requests this month, so we'll move on to donations. Superintendent Malone?
We have one donation tonight, on behalf of the former public schools, requesting acceptance of $500 from the Bizco Construction Company. This $500 will be helped to support the adapted bowling open.
Second.
Any discussion on acceptance of the donation?
Is that a roll call?
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a few contracts to come before the committee tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I do have, I do have a question on the contract. Kenny, maybe you can help us with this. Investigation and evaluation of the Pace Nagel Auditorium and the pending separation from the Dirfee High School, can you just, you know, just tell us what that is, so I know what that money's going to, please?
Sure, so, the, in preparation of that separation, once the bridge gets cut off, that building will be self-sustaining, and to make it self-sustaining, we need to do a chapter seventy, a chapter thirty-four assessment of the building. Basically, it'll, it'll show the, the efficiencies, the deficiencies, it'll also allow us to do a phased approach to basically reconstructing that building. So, for instance, once we, we change the building over, its use changes. It's no longer an educational facility, now it's an administrative facility, and square footage allowances change, fire alarm system will change, sprinkler systems, so what we're looking to do is, is have an accurate assessment of where we stand before that separation happens, and then proceed with whatever renovations we need to make that allow that building to be a separate structure on the site.
I, I know you and I had a conversation about this a long time ago, you also said that when it's separated from the actual school building, it'll make us eligible for some federal grants, potentially?
Exactly, so the idea is to separate the building into two parcels, 45,000 square feet each, 45,000 would remain as admin for the district, and 45% of that building would remain, 45,000 square feet, 45,000 square, admin, 45,000 square feet would be used for arts, and, and what we would do with that section is apply for cultural grants, different grants that are available, large-dollar grants. By keeping that separation, it'll allow us to maximize those grants.
Great, I appreciate it. Kev?
So, when you say this plan, whatever, where is the plan, like?
There is no plan. As of right now, this, this thirty-four assessment of the building is going to set us up with a phased plan as to how we approach this building. So, currently, we have the Pace Center in there, the building is still an educational building, so it's falling under the guise that it's still part of Dirfee, so it didn't change anything in, in its occupancy, nor did it change anything according to code. Once that building gets separated, it's no longer part of Dirfee High School, and it's a standalone building.
Right, so my question is, who made that decision?
To do what?
To have that school, have that no longer be an educational institution? And when does that come before the committee to decide? Like, as you're talking, and as I've talked about it, we've taken tours, it might not make sense to make that a non-educational institution, because all the things you're talking about cost millions of dollars to make it, to put new sprinkler systems in and all that, so there's got to be a cost-benefit analysis to, keeping the building as is right now, it's an auditorium that our students can use throughout the city, keep it as an educational use, there might be more sense in doing that than cutting it off. That's what, what I'm saying, I thought this seemed like an investigation to then decide what to do with it.
It's an investigation of the building, so it's, it's, it's a nuts-and-bolts investigation of the building, brick-and-mortar investigation, so it's not a, it's not a planning tool as much as it is to see what the building requires, and how long it would take for us to bring that building up to code. The, the, the issue is, is once it gets cut off, it's no longer Dirfee High School, okay, so if, even if we keep it as an educational facility, what is it, what is that purpose? And, and how are we going to use it as an educational facility? How are we going to use it as an administrative facility? Is there a combination of both that's going to happen there? Is Dirfee High School still going to utilize that auditorium, the band rooms, the, the different rooms that are connected on the 45,000-square-foot side? So, all of that stuff has to be decided, I, I can't do anything without the thirty-four review first, and then, obviously, we're going to have some estimates as part of that thirty-four that we can bring to the committee to take a look at.
And then it's going to come back to us, that's, that was my point, it seemed like as if there was already a decision made on what to do. This is an investigation to gather information, then come before us to say, this is the value in this plan versus that plan, and then we as a body will-
Exactly, this, this, this is just first step.
Right, now, it just seemed like that was already decided, that's why I was-
The reason, there's, there's two, there's two pieces of urgency here, so we, one of the pieces was to move the Pace Center to the, to that building, because they will no longer have a space in, in the new Dirfee. The second, and the construction needed to be accomplished now as opposed to later on. This, our entire special education department is located at Dirfee, that needs to be moved, and that section, its urgency is going to be as soon as the building gets, the new building is occupied, because then the demolition portion of Dirfee construction will start, and we need to have a house for them to be located in.
Yeah, I get it, and I think the Pace Center was done very well, the guys did a great job, you, whoever, that looks great. All I was suggesting is, we should, we should make that decision at the time, once we get it, so that sounds like that's what you're saying, so-
Exactly.
It's all good on me, thank you, I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kenny, the Facilities and Operations Budget, $29,500?
Yes.
Where's that going toward?
So, that, that $29,000 will be paid to AI3 architects, and they're going to be doing the chapter thirty-four review.
Okay, um, also, where is that money coming from, out of Dirfee Operation Budget, or?
It's coming out of the operations budget.
Okay, for Dirfee? Okay, for Durfee?
Under contracted services, not out of the Durfee construction.
Sorry, under contracted services.
Right. It's coming out of contracted services of our budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? A motion and a second's already been heard. Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up, approval of grants. We have one, expansion of HI, twenty-five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Tom?
I'm just, I'm just curious as to what it might look like, given the situation we're in with COVID-19. Will, will this grant go forward even if schools are not open?
So, the, to answer your question, yes, because summer may look like learning looks right now. It could also be a blended model, which we talked about last week with the state, that there'll probably be some virtual, but also, if the conditions continue to improve, in-person ability as well. So, we're, we're going to be doing stuff this summer. We just don't know if it will be in-person or virtual.
Thank you. I yield.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussions. Item number one is a vote to approve school choice for out-of-district students in grades six to twelve and non-resident students in grades K to five for Fall River Public School employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for 2021 school year, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
I humbly request that the school committee vote to approve this item.
Motion to approve.
Second, as-is, right? This language is as-is, what is currently?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is a discussion and vote to approve school year nineteen, twenty, emergency student grading procedures, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So, as the committee is aware, with the shutdown of the last two months, the state's been providing guidance on how school systems should move forward with grading. We've taken that guidance. We've talked to several surrounding community leaders, both superintendents and school principals, and then we put together a team to look at what should be the Fall River path forward for grading. We've attached that path forward in your binder. I have folks here that would be able to answer questions tonight if you have questions. But we, we have a blended model, where we're blending the practices of averages with, with the pass/fail, credit, non-credit, and at the same time, also answering questions about what does this mean for moving students forward into the next consecutive grade. We feel that we've been very inclusive in developing this. This would be a grading policy procedure for this year only. If the committee votes to approve, we will come back to the committee with the regular grading model when you vote on the program of studies next year. But given the emergency nature of where we are, we're going to move forward with grading, and we feel that this is the, the most fair way to address that.
Motion to approve with a question.
Second.
Kev?
Just a quick question on the summer, the part in here. I think this is fair. Everything looked, that I looked at, looked like it's been very fair to everyone. But there's something in here about giving, assigning summer work. That's voluntary, right? That's not going to increase costs to requiring summer school. Look, I can't see exactly where it is, but it says somewhere, if you didn't do well, they're going to give you a packet of summer work?
Yeah, if you were failing, failing, we're going to give students more opportunities to pass.
Voluntarily, though?
Yes.
So, we're not going to be?
I don't know, volunteers.
Do we normally pay for summer school?
No. Pay for it? Like mandatory, you mean? No.
So, in the years past, if a student didn't pass and they needed to go to summer school, we helped them. Did this, who pays that bill?
Yeah, we would offset some of it.
So, that's my concern in this, is this increasing, is this going to cost us any money to approve this? Is the question.
No. Cost you money? No.
For summer school? Or the equivalent of summer school?
It's not summer school, Kevin. If there's kids that have failed, we're going to give them additional work. They're all doing homeschooling.
So, you're, you're comfortable it's not going to cost us? All right, good. Good data, I yield. Thank you. Nice job.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, so, Mr. Superintendent, given the emergency nature of where we're at right now, I applaud all efforts trying to arrive at some type of fair, fair ground as to how to grade students moving forward. For me, it begs the question as to, the school year was so quickly interrupted and halted. When a student picks up again the following term, let's say, just for hypothetical reasons, that could be in September, hopefully, whatever it is that any grade level has missed out on, are they picking up from that point moving forward, or are they going to, or go, whatever curriculum brought, should have brought them up to June to connect them to September?
Right. So, the state's adopted a set of power standards. My understanding is what the next year would look like is we would pick up, refreshing what those power standards were, and then move forward. Right.
So, so power says, so I was thinking, I was thinking along the conceptual lines of mastery, like, like if the kid's working in science and they're at a certain level, if they master that concept and, and they, they fit the power standard, they move forward. So, the power standard is almost equal to a mastery component.
Yeah, but in a shorter time window. So, theoretically, yes, but in reality, because of the time, the last six weeks of the year, they've condensed it pretty much. So, I don't know if mastery would be the right term, but it's close to that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure it out. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Costa? Then Ms. Larevi?
Thank you, Mr. Corey. If I may ask you, Mr. Chair, the Superintendent, is there a plan to communicate out to parents after tonight's vote, or is it going back to the committee who put it together for further discussion?
How do the parents find out about this?
No. This will be the procedure once it's voted on. So, we will communicate with parents after.
Right. So, after tonight's vote, we get communicated out to parent?
Yes.
Okay. That was my concern, that, that we're having this discussion, albeit a brief one, and we have the information before us, but parents who are at home, who are watching this may not have a full understanding of what it is that we're voting on tonight and how that may impact their son or daughter. So, if we can get this out to folks so that, obviously, it will just be manfight, phase three, so that people understand that the work that's being done counts, and, and it's going to be reviewed, and it's going to have some weight in terms of pass/fail for their son or daughter. So, I'm just asking that after tonight's vote, we communicate this out to parents so that everybody has it. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Larevi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Malone, I just have a question regarding the, the secondary school and the grading. And, and back to the summer aspect of it, it states that the students that are unable to engage in remote learning will be required to participate in additional opportunities. Now, are these opportunities going to be packets? Is it going to be one-on-one? Is it, what kind of opportunities are these going to be offered? And what are the K through five going to be offered these, this educational aspect as well?
I'm going to let my experts answer the question for you.
Okay. Ms. Larevi, when you speak of the secondary students, and we're looking at the category of students that if we ended school on, on March fifteenth, they were failing. And since we've left physical operations and gone to remote operations, these students have not engaged at all. So, we've got failing grades and zero engagement from March fifteenth to the end of June. That, that's the equivalent of, of failing. Now, we can, we can write that it's mandatory, just like we want every kid that failed to go to summer school when we have it, you know, in, in the old paradigm. But that's always an option. A kid can always just say, no, I'm not going to summer school. Well, they're behind that credit towards graduation. And, and that's, that's, there's no other way to really address that. What kind of opportunities might there be over the summer that, those are just, file that in the categories of questions we can't answer yet, but we're planning for? We'd love to have physical face-to-face operations, knowing that that's probably not likely. We'll have to figure out some kind of remote summer school for students. And we always make it work with, with funding that we save from year to year where we run summer school. There, there's always money to start. There's always grant money that, that tends to come in to, to fund and to help those that, that can't afford to go to summer school. So, we'll do whatever we need for the students that are willing to be a part of something. And for those that have disconnected and, and they won't engage right now, they're not going to have the credit for this year, and they'll, they'll be the ones that'll make up a year, or they'll be scrambling for credit when we can get back together.
Thank you. I yield.
Kev?
Just taking Ms. Larevi's point. When I, the reason why I asked the first question was where it said, students unable to engage in remote learning will be required. I think the will be is where I'm having a little heartache thinking that if we say they will be, that's mandatory. I agree with everything you said, Mr. Damaris. You can't, you can only do what you can do. But I think with that being said, I would like to make an amendment to this to say, to call that may be required, which I think the may will just get us off the hook in case somebody, we wouldn't have, it's really doing the same exact thing, but it's not potentially putting us on the hook for making sure, let's say there's no summer school because of the society and the situation we're going through. If it says will be, then we might be required to do more than what we would if we said may. So, with that, I'd like to make that a form of a motion just to alleviate that.
Would it be appropriate for me to make a suggestion, Mr. Agia?
You can. I mean, I made a motion.
I want to follow Robert's rules of order.
No, I'm saying, I think it makes sense, because it doesn't say will.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I mean, I agree if, if the superintendent's indicating, and Mr. Damaris is indicating, it's not going to be necessarily mandatory, then some other language may be in place, promote learning, the opportunity will be offered to students, or as Mr. Agia has proposed. I, I think if we're not making it mandatory, then we need to say it is, and we need to enforce it. If we're not, and we're simply going to give students the opportunity, or, or it may be required, then make sure the language is just, but I'm in favor of either one. Just, I need to hear the superintendent that it's going to be required and we're going to enforce it. And if that's not going to be the case, I agree with Mr. Agia, and I'm willing to support the amendment, to make it the opportunity will be presented, offered to students, or it may be required, either or. Good, I yield.
Okay. Mr. Damaris?
I would just suggest, in the spirit of what you're saying, Mr. Agia, and to not box us into a corner with language, if we just simply say that students unable to engage in remote learning will be required to participate in additional opportunities over the summer or at a time at a later date. So, if we could write in a way that says, you failed, here's an opportunity to remediate the credit. You may or may not choose to participate in it, but at the end of the day, at the end of the line, you're, you have to do it somehow. So, whether it's during the summer, additional classes, night school, there's, there's a whole menu of options there. So, I, I hear what you're saying. You don't want to be on the hook for something that we might not be able to afford, right? Okay. But I think we can still say the same thing, that you will be required to remediate this in some way. Typical way is summer school.
Mr. Agia?
I, I think we're on the same exact page. I think what I would think is good language may be to say, the remote learning may be required to participate in additional opportunities for learning in our summer school in order to earn appropriate credit. Because I think that's where you're getting to. You can't just say to a kid, you failed, but we're just going to give you credit. The credit is, the high school piece is important. And I think by adding the may be required, whether it's summer, after-school credit recovery, all the things you talked about, in order to earn credit. I think that's the spirit of what this is saying, is that you're just not going to issue a kid credit because we had the COVID virus. If they failed and they did nothing at all to help themselves, at some point, you're going to have to do something in order to earn credit. I'm not sure if that, adding that sentence at the end about the credit makes, does that workable for you? Is that?
That works for me. I just, the, the word may, I think, gives, gives the sense that you may not have to do this. You failed, you didn't do anything, and you still may not have to do anything.
Yeah. And I think the part of no credit, you can just say to them, you're not getting credit unless you do this, whether it's, you know, here or there. If I was, if I was a parent and you gave me this, and my student needed summer school, and it says he will, we will get summer school, I'm going to call the superintendent's office and say, where's the summer school? It's going to force us to have a summer school. We don't know if we're even going to have, or the ability to do it. But I don't know what other colleagues say, but I, I think.
Yeah, let's just, let's go with the First Amendment. It's fine, may. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Malone?
I captured this to, to say may, and I added at the end, in order to earn credit. So, that language on there, if you vote on that, that can be fixed.
I'll make that as a motion.
Okay. So, we had a motion and a second. So, now we have another motion and a second.
I withdraw my original amendment and put what the superintendent just suggested as the new amendment.
All right. So, would you please read that again, Dr. Malone, so everybody knows what?
Sure. On that section, it says, students unable to engage in remote learning may be required to participate in additional opportunities for learning over the summer or during the 2021 school year in order to earn credit.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Third, third item.
On the main motion now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Agia. Now, on the main motion. Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay. Third item, discussion and vote to approve recommended FY21 Gate Program phasing as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So, this is another COVID-19 issue I brought forward to this committee after we did our Gate report. Couple of options to maintain the Gate program as-is, or to sunset the fourth-grade entry as we move toward a new and robust honors program. Because of the crisis, the COVID-19 crisis and our inability to be in school, there's no equitable way right now to assess students for gate entry. As such, I'm recommending to the committee for approval, your approval, that we move this coming year with the plan where the, we'll no longer take in fourth-grade students. Those students will stay in their neighborhood school. We'll use universal design practices so that they'll continue to, to get really awesome instruction in a much more universally-designed setting. We'll maintain the kids that are in the fourth grade as they move to fifth grade in the Gate program. And then sixth, seventh, and eighth will still be at CUS. That gives us a year to roll out a new testing system to look at moving the Gate program across sixth, seventh, and eighth, across our three middle schools. So, by approving this tonight, all we're doing is saying, okay, we're not taking in any fourth graders. Those kids are going to stay in their neighborhood schools. And the teachers, the two fourth-grade teachers, one at Sylvia and one at Green, will stay where they are, and we'll look to balance class sizes across the fourth grade. With that, we feel that this is the most equitable and the only way to deal with this at this time.
Motion approved the superintendent's recommendation.
Second in.
A motion and a second. Mr. Corey?
Just a discussion. Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Superintendent, I, I know that's equitable. I just want to spell it out. I just want to understand it a little bit more. Are the two fourth-grade teachers, will they be teaching fifth grade, or they'll just stay at the fourth-grade level?
As of right now, they'd be teaching fourth grade based on class size.
Which is no longer going to be Gate.
Right. I, I would try to balance the fourth grade. We did have a bubble this year in third grade. So, I think that'd be able to do a better job of balancing that bubble at the fourth grade.
Mr. Superintendent, so the task force that was assembled to look at this?
Mr. Superintendent, so the task force that was assembled to look at this, is that task force still intact?
Yes.
And uh, you're going to continue to look, look into it to develop a new model?
We got a lot of work to do moving forward as we, you know, what we're trying to do is grow uh, our honors program. Uh, and you know, fourth and fifth grade will look uh, like a universal design model in the neighborhood schools, but it's the sixth, seventh, and eighth, uh, we got to get a new fifth grade assessment, uh, bring forward to the committee uh, a proposal uh, this sometime this year, get the school committee's input, and then uh, refine that and hopefully uh, have a final proposal for you next spring.
Thanks, I just wanted to get a kind of a handle on where, where we're at with it, the motion. I agree with the whole idea of, of looking at it closely and trying to refine the whole process. I like the idea of bulking up the middle school model and getting the kids better prepared for that transition to their freshman year at high school. I think that makes a real lot of sense. It's what we call vertical alignment, and this speaks to vertical alignment. So in that essence, I approve, thanks, with that I yield.
Mr. Hetsa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few concerns uh, as far as getting rid of the GATE program. And you've addressed one of those concerns already by stating you plan on bringing honors courses to the middle school. Or some, some model that.
The GATE program's not going away, it's just moving up.
I understand, we're getting rid of the program as it is, trying to expand it.
Yes.
Right, so I'm just concerned initially that some of our elementary students who are capable of achieving, you know, extra work academically and what's going to happen. So the universal model you speak of, will, will it address that?
Yes, so the, the universal design for learning is how do you, you know, if you have a class of 26 kids, um, how do you move students that are really capable and ready uh, to experience more rigorous instruction while with some other students who aren't, uh, you scaffold for them and you get to a place where a classroom uh, is really doing a lot of really cool differentiated instruction. So we've been training for this model for several years, this uh, uh, work going on across the district with our uh, tiered system of support work. Uh, we feel that we're, we're, we'll, this will be a, uh, an easy transition for us uh, at our schools for those fourth graders, uh, as we continue to do this. We feel in the long run, if we, uh, you know, the, the model would be that instead of now taking a test in third grade, kids would take a test in fifth grade and that that's where the, the GATE program would exist in sixth, seventh, and eighth across the three middle schools based on.
Through honors courses or advanced curriculum?
Yeah, we, I mean, we still call it GATE if we want, but we're using the term honors, it just sounded a little more academic, but it's, it's the same thing.
Right, so I mean, my only concern again is that there's students in third, fourth, and fifth grade who would have been challenged a little more, that they are continuing to be challenged.
And we're going to continue to challenge these students and other things that, you know, we're really looking at is we, expanding is also looking at, uh, you know, right now that, you know, uh, if a child's at uh, one of the Catholic schools, they can't take a test to, to come into the advanced work program or the GATE program. Those things are kind of things that I'd like to bring forward to the committee to talk about. Is, you know, because um, we have a million different opportunities and options here in the system, and we want to be able to uh, meet the needs of all kids and families.
Thank you, that I yield.
Anything further?
Chairman?
I'm sorry, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess my concern is that I, I want to make it more equitable, obviously, for students and give more students access to it. And if that happens, sixth, seventh, and eighth, I'm fine with it. I, I still struggle with the fact that you have students in third and fourth grade who excel academically. What are we putting in place for those students? We're just going to wait for them to get to fifth grade? Um, I know that the GATE program is what it is, it's, it's a gifted and talented program. Students test, they show through their academic abilities, also through their ability to interact socially with students. Um, they get accepted into that program. I understand that it's been somewhat restricted for students and confined to certain schools, but I, I need to hear more about what the task force's plans are to address students who are excelling in third and fourth grade, uh, excuse me, in fourth and fifth grade or showing signs in third grade, but then excelling in fourth and fifth grade. What are we doing for them? Are they just going to remain their elementary classes or is there going to be some sort of, I, I guess, honors program at the elementary level?
So for this year, Mark, is the transition year, uh, we're only talking about the kids that are currently in third grade because the current GATE program with the fourth graders stay, they move to fifth, they have the, the, the GATE program. For the kids that are currently in third grade, their regular classrooms, when they get to the fourth room in their neighborhood school, uh, they'll be using universal design for learning procedures and practices uh, to get at differentiated instruction to be able to push students uh, to the uh, highest levels of rigor that, that they're able to uh, uh, find success with. So that's a one-year transition. As we move forward, uh, the, the, the task force is looking at a whole host of uh, uh, activities and practices that will be prevalent across all fourth and fifth grades. Uh, uh, and you know, the, the students that are showing great promise academically is, you know, young in second and third grade, uh, they're still going to get pushed and, and get um, uh, everything that they need to be successful for when they take a test if they like that model for the uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So I, I don't see anyone um, getting um, uh, the short shrift on this. Uh, I think this is, is a, a wise and practical uh, way to roll this out. And I, I think that the uh, uh, you'll find that our, the, the task force of folks that we have work on this, they'll continue to work and we'll come back to the committee as early as next fall with uh, the, the frame, the start of a framework. Uh, because I know it's going to take several discussions with the committee to get us to a place that, uh, that we're able to make a solid recommendation.
So I, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I, I'll vote tonight for the plan to make sense, because obviously you're going to have a difficult time testing incoming students to the fourth grade next year. But I, I can tell you that I will not be supportive of a GATE program at the elementary level if those students that are excelling are going to be in a classroom setting with just a, a regular classroom. Um, and, and I know we'll aim to try to push those students, but the reality is that the, the way it's designed now is that whole class gets pushed as a group, not, not just two or three students in a class who get the ability to do extra assignments or who get pushed in a certain way. So I, I, I think that the GATE program has been a draw for the public schools. I think that parents who have an interest in their students, their son or daughter going to school, have chosen public schools because of the chance to probably go in the GATE program. Um, I just think that getting rid of it at the elementary level or watering it down um, is not something that I would be supportive of. So um, for the purposes of tonight's vote, certainly I think it makes sense to shelve what's going on for the incoming fourth graders, but there's going to be a presentation down the road where we're going to have students who are excelling in, in regular classroom settings with other students. I, I don't think that's a model that, that I'm certainly comfortable voting unless I hear more about it, but with that I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Kev?
Just a thought on this, uh, listening to the dialogue and the discussion. I think personally that we have an opportunity in front of us when we look at gifted children and children that learn at all different levels and what Mr. Costa was just saying and other folks, that in the old days, the way it used to be, is we'd have an honors program basically, or whatever they had called it, at all of the grades. So I think we should look at something like that in all of the elementary schools to have an advanced honors program within the school so that it would, it would address what Mr. Costa's talking about, but it wouldn't be only for 50 kids, it would be for potentially 200 kids or 300 kids.
So that, that's the model, we were using the term advanced work class at each of the schools. It gets a little more dicey just in your two-unit schools, but we're going to come forward with a plan as uh, Mr. Costa articulated to uh, to sage everyone's understanding as to what that looks like. But you're absolutely right that the uh, the advanced work class, uh, it's a.
Like cohort.
Yeah, it would be a cohort of kids and we can push. So we're really excited about this, just so everyone knows, we think we can do it. And I think this transition, great, given it's a crisis that caused it, but this disruption, I think, will get us uh, there more quickly.
Yeah, and along those same lines, I, I think that the um, one of the issues that we've, we have here in Fall River is that all the kids get mixed into one, and it's difficult at both ends, I think, of whether it's the lower-level student or the higher-level student. And I think now with the lot, get the gap in learning that all of the kids are going to have, a lot of them, I think we really need to take a strong look at if there's on the other end of the spectrum, where we have to have classes that are going to be like ramping up these kids in a supercharged way as opposed to having them drag down other kids that might be ready to go a little faster. So that's just my opinion on how that's going, but I do think you're on the right track. The committee met and I, you've got some great people on there that are going to do good work, so thank you.
Next item, number four, is an update on fiscal year 2021 budget as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So uh, I've been trying my best to communicate in my Friday emails to the committee as to what we're hearing from the state. Uh, and uh, really, the only way to describe it is this is uh, um, uncharted waters or just unprecedented times that we do not have right now um, any accurate information as to what the FY21 budget from the state will look like, whether or not uh, the Student Opportunity Act, I know Mr. Corey worked so hard with the, the FREA uh, support uh, on the Hill to advocate for, uh, we, we do not know at this time uh, what those numbers will look like. All I do know right now is that the governor's number, which we built our budget off of, which you voted to approve, uh, which had about 13 million additional dollars for us uh, over FY20, that we're being told that that budget uh, is no longer accurate, that the House and the Senate will combine uh, and release one budget uh, that will, that will, that will have the new um, 100% net school spending figure. Uh, and at that time, uh, we'll have information to share because we'll know where we'll be. Uh, the silver lining, the only silver lining right now is that uh, soon we'll receive somewhere between uh, 4.5 and 4.8 million dollars in federal stimulus cares money for the purpose of being used uh, in next year's uh, budget. Uh, this is non-net school spending eligible dollars that is assigned based on Title I. Some of that money has to go to the Catholic schools and other private schools uh, as well uh, because of the, the way the law is written. Uh, and that money will help offset uh, monies that, uh, that we thought we were going to receive, but we're not. The only other good news I can tell you is that when we built this budget and we, I really think, I was so proud of this budget that we passed this year, it was a really good budget, appreciate everyone's help. Uh, but there was a, there were 140 new positions in that budget. Um, the good news is new positions don't exist. Uh, so, well, if we're receiving less than we, we thought, uh, we're going to be able to make reductions uh, without touching people. That's my goal, uh, I'm going to stick to that goal, uh, protect people first. Uh, and uh, if, you know, if we can get out of this at a level of service, uh, I'd, I'd be happy. Uh, this is uh, of course, not information that anyone wanted to hear or even expected up to, you know, two months ago, but that's the reality as to where we are. And uh, I'll continue to share information with the committee as it becomes available. But you know, the hypotheticals and the what-ifs and we, we just, we don't have any answers. And uh, we're just going to keep up moving and operating in a way uh, that's, that's, that's practical and uh, communicating through the process.
Kev?
Just a, a brief comment on that, right now we don't know exactly what's happening, but um, I'm really interested in having that joint meeting with the city council uh, together so that all legislative bodies that are within the city and the mayor can sit down together, whether it's with Zoom or whatever, because we all need to be on the same page here with the funding, with 100% of net school spending, what can happen in the future year based on, you know, we don't want anybody to get laid off, that means school workers or police or fire, you know, other important workers. So I think we should have that joint meeting sooner than later, and then we can all sit down and figure out the best way to handle it. And I'm going to have some more questions when the regular budget comes up, but I do think the superintendent's doing the best he can trying to get the info from the state, and um, we're going to go from there, with that I yield.
Anything further on the update? Next item up on the agenda is a discussion and vote to approve proposed changes to the school committee approval of bill schedules for procurement of goods services as referred by the policy subcommittee and, and to waive all reads presented by Kevin Almeida.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, Mr. Almeida.
Uh, so, so the, the motion here will move forward with uh, requiring two signatures of the committee on all bill schedules going forward. Uh, in addition, we will provide a monthly update, which will require signatures from every member of the school committee. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Costa, then Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I hear correctly, Almeida indicated that a monthly report will require all members to sign it or majority of the committee?
Well, sorry, it's a majority, I apologize.
No, no, that's fine, I just, I'm thinking we're going to be adding additional signatures at the monthly one and subtracting them from the bill schedule, so.
Yep.
If it's just a majority, a simple majority, that's fine, I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, when you said uh, having everything waived, is that a preamble, emergen, um, an emergency preamble?
It's to waive the additional readings.
So, so normally with the policies, it require, it usually requires two readings before it can be acted on?
Right.
So we're act.
So we're.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Any, any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Uh, next item up is a discussion and vote to approve the third quarter transfer as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Kev?
So on item number one, the coaches' salary savings, my question is, did anybody request to be paid?
Uh, for the spring, you mean?
Yeah.
As of right now, no, not that I'm aware of.
So no union, no request at all to be paid?
Nope.
All right, with that I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve third quarter revolving fund as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsa?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Number eight, discussion and vote to approve year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Two questions.
Oh, Kev, I'm sorry.
So uh, one of my questions, and I don't think it's necessarily on here, but if you look at professional salaries, teacher salary, any of those lines, the, the amount that's in the right column, the available budget is not necessarily available, right? That's, when we pay everybody out for the year, that's not the number.
No, that's, that's as of the end of the month in April.
Yeah, so I would be curious in future meetings or in a Friday report from the superintendent just to see, what's the cost to complete that? So if everybody gets paid for the year, how much is going to be in that line? It doesn't have to be in a formal report, but I think that's good information for us to at least have on, on our plate. But my real question was on the school healthcare projections on the, the one that's attached. So I see the highlighted bit that says where we're projected, and then I see the budget, um, 23.3. But I also recall the uh, on the end of the week that we were a million dollars potentially off in the city. Can you talk about?
Sure.
What that is, if that's real, or is it, is this our budget or the city budget?
So when the, when the budget was, was initially put together, the budget for health insurance was at 24.3 million dollars when it was developed this past year. Um, when the, when the bu, when the information was put forward in the end of the airport for health insurance, a new number was updated for health insurance at that time. And so the updated budget figure for health insurance. And so the updated budget figure for health insurance was 23.3 million. And so in comparison of what the initial number was and what was submitted in the end of the airport is a million dollar difference. And so the shortfall in the end of the airport reflects a million dollars due to health insurance, projected health insurance.
And that's for the next year?
That's for, that's for fiscal year 20, for this year.
The one that we're currently in?
Yes.
So when you're saying the end of the airport, you mean the beginning of the airport?
Say that again, I'm, I'm sorry.
So in the budget for the city-
Yep.
-on the city's books, they have 24.3 million assigned to healthcare-
Correct.
-and, and this document shows 23.3, which is what you had anticipated we were spending.
Which is what we submitted with the end of the airport, correct.
So in the city's healthcare checkbook, there's a million dollars extra, is what you're saying?
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah. But it's in there-
Based on the budget, yes.
Yeah. So I think that's a big number. You know about this, right?
We just talked about it.
So what I would recommend, and I don't think it needs to be a motion necessarily, but that at the next meeting, we get an updated document to show what we're spending. Because the other thing is because of this virus and the situation, people aren't going to the hospital, so that, that number's going to go down even more. So now we could potentially be sitting with, like we were last year, having $2 million instead of one, it's coming over to the schools.
We, we'll have to see what the months look like, but, but I don't know, I don't know that, but we'll have to see how much.
Well, I, I would like, I'd like to actually make a motion that this item be placed on the next agenda with the appropriate transfer from the city. If there's a million dollars extra and it's not projected, that we get that as well. And if the city folks have to come to the meeting, at least they'll know it's on the agenda where we can have a discussion. But I don't want it to go into June, whatever the next meeting is, June 5th or whatever, and then we don't know, and then later on they're saying, well, in August, we'll give you the money. I'd rather do it sooner to make sure we are at 100%. The mayor's committed to 100%, I give him credit for that in the current year. We need to keep that now and not kick it till August, would be my motion. So I make a motion that we put this healthcare and the city and the total funding on the agenda for the next meeting.
Kev, I, I had a discussion with Mary Sahadi, and we've had numerous discussions with Kevin about this. And if you've noticed, we are desperately been trying to catch up with the money as we transferred at the last meeting. And I was, before this meeting started, I don't know if we need a motion. The city is well aware of what we owe you, minus a few dollars. And I'm, I just told Kevin, I'm trying to get him another, another million, hopefully within the next few weeks, so that we can keep this rolling and, because we, we know we have to catch up. And I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't believe there's any secrets here. I know Kevin came up to the office and Mary and Kevin, myself and the superintendent sat down, and we're pretty sure, you know, give or take a little bit, but nobody's off the reservation on this. We know where we're going and we, we know what our obligations are and we're going to do it.
That sounds good to me. I mean, I, the only reason why I make the motion is because I want to make sure it gets on the agenda. You know how things have worked in the past?
Yeah, no, I'm hoping for the agenda comes.
Sometimes if you, if you take care of it before then, it doesn't have to be, or the discussion item can be, where do we think we're going to be? Because unfortunately, I think we're going to be stuck with trying to figure out, how do we end this year, not telling people they might not get laid off for next year, which is what I'm trying to avoid. But so if we build up our bank account here the best we can, this will help us, so.
That quote you just said, Kevin, came from the other Kevin before the meeting started. Am I right or wrong?
Yes.
That was the same quote.
Both Kevins are on the same page then.
They are.
I appreciate your support, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Anything further on this one?
Yeah, just one, one small question. Kev, on the available funds page, just trying to clarify, what, what's the contingency with Puerto Rican funds?
When we, we set aside $200,000 in the Puerto Rico grant funding for, you know, anything that may occur, you know, going forward. So there's $200,000 currently in the Puerto Rico grant, so to speak, through the, to the end of the year, that we can use on whatever we need to.
Is there a time limit on that money?
It's got to be spent by June 30th.
You, you, you see fit to find ways to expend that money?
Yes.
And when it says total across all funding sources, that, the butterscotch line?
Yep. That's operating in the Puerto Rico funds there.
Yep. I just wanted to get a handle on that. Thanks. I yield, Mr. Chair. I yield.
Yield. Anything further? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Chairman, is it on Mr. Agia's motion?
I withdraw my motion. Sorry.
This is on the discussion and vote to approve year-to-date budget report.
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item is number nine, it's an update and discussion, transportation payments to Tremblay in and out of District 7D van transportation, Whaling City in district special education bus transportation, Amaral Bus Typical Education Yellow Buses, Fisher Athletics and Activities, and Vanpool Transportation Cost Share for McKinney-Vinta with other districts as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So, so at this time, I, we just wanted to give you an update as to where we stand with, you know, information from the bus companies in relation to what's happened since the school closure. And so at this time, the, the bus companies have submitted proposals for payment of, I'll start with Amaral Bus Company, they are requesting at this time 75% of the total cost for the remainder of the year. Whaling City Transit, we've received correspondence from them requesting 60% of the total contract for the remainder of the year. I'm in a working group with New Bedford because they're taking the lead on the Tremblay's conversation, so to speak. And at this time, Tremblay's has requested 58% of the remainder of the contract after the closure. And NRT, Vanpool, they've requested a 22% reduction or a 78% payment at this time. So with that said, I will open it up for discussion as to this, that's where we stand.
Mr. Chairman?
What was that, Kev? Kevin?
So the way I look at this, the services haven't been rendered since March 16th.
Correct.
Point blank. The schools are closed, the kids aren't getting transported. We went back and forth over this, and last meeting, we talked about going out and seeing if we could negotiate it. Apparently, the negotiations aren't working because this is not going to happen, in my opinion. So I'd like to make a motion that we have no service equals no pay, and that's that. And I make that in the form of a motion, and these numbers aren't real, like at this point. So make a motion for 0%. No work, no pay.
Oh, second me with the question, though?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hart.
Kevin, so what Mr. Agia just said as far as March 16th, new services, there's been no services even for special ed and whatnot, correct?
There has not been, no.
Okay. So have we, have we looked at or considered anyway? Because I know that there's some bus companies pay in advance for certain vehicles that they purchase to accommodate our students. Have we looked into what the cost that, that might be to maybe, you know, give them reimbursement on that?
In, in many cases, the bus companies are just not very forthcoming with that information. And so at the end of the day, I believe that, you know, through this, through the negotiations, through our discussions, we've been trying to get, get to a point where we, we feel comfortable trying to figure out what that actually represents of the contract, and it has not been very successful to this point.
On, from their, on their side?
Yes.
Okay, well, I yield. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, these, these percentages that, that we're giving, we've been told that that in some cases is essentially what'll make them whole at this time.
Right.
With, I'm sorry, Mr. Hart?
No, I yield, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hetza?
All right. So there was a motion, a second, and I don't necessarily support $0 going to the bus companies, but in no way do I support 75% or anything even close to that. I do, I think we're in the position where we can help everyone, we can help the bus companies, we can help the city of Fall River. The bus companies run a business, right? So they do have vehicles, as one of my colleagues mentioned, they have these payments, you know, they need to maintain the ability to be a business. So I think a certain percentage would be fair, but nowhere near the numbers I'm seeing in here, you know, let's say 20%, something like that, you know, 30%. I think that would be fair to help them pay for their vehicle payments, their overhead, you know, things that they have to pay for, that right now they're not generating any revenue. So I think that would be beneficial. But I don't think we're voting on that tonight. I think this is just a discussion.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't know where this has to go. I wish they were more forthcoming with their actual bills, right? How much you actually paying for your vehicles. We have no problem helping, let's say, you pay for the vehicles, the insurance to keep them on the road, you know, maybe some of their unemployment costs, but at this point in time, then they're not, they don't have any labor costs, right? With the exception, maybe some maintenance people and their administration people, none of the drivers, they're all on unemployment. I mean, these numbers are drastically inflated for what they actually need to continue operating as a business and still being able to provide us the services we need next year. So I would hope that negotiations with these bus companies continue and maybe make sense of it, but these numbers are, they're not doing anything for us by repaying you to do nothing. It doesn't make sense. But I do want to help. I just, I don't like these numbers. With that, I yield.
Mr. Malone?
Because this discussion is in public, it, it would help us if there was a number put out on the floor around a figure, so that we can go back and move forward.
Well, K, well, hold on. Kevin made a motion, and I believe it was seconded by Mr. Hart, of zero.
Correct.
Of zero, and they, they get nothing. So that's the motion and the second right now, that is a number. Go ahead, Kev.
So the reason why I say zero is because we, 30 days ago, gave the authority to go back and negotiate. What we got in the negotiation was 75%, 60%, 78%. Obviously, that's not cutting it. So my motion for zero is to let the bus companies know that we're going to give them zero. Now, if they want to come back and negotiate it, come back and negotiate it. But in open session, we can't be giving out numbers of what we, what we have or whatever, we, you know, I understand if we had, they had to approve something or whatever, we could do it. But nobody on this committee is going to want to give them 78% when they haven't done the work. So my 0% is a little harsh, but at the same time, it's sending a message that we're not playing around here. We need to get this done, and that 0% is what we can do. If they don't like it, they can choose to take us to court, to sue us, whatever they got to do, and then we can litigate it appropriately with our legal counsel. But that 0 is so that we're not getting into a number, it's zero. They don't like it, they can come back and litigate it, and then we can talk about it. That's my, the effect of my motion. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So no, I, I like the attitude of where my colleague, Mr. Agia's point is coming from. What I'm concerned about is these numbers just represent hypotheticals to me, Kevin. And there's no rhyme or reason behind anybody's numbers. I mean, the, the company Vanpool wants 78% of their, their contract. That's clearly to keep their operations whole. And they have a, they have a considerable contract with us, and there hasn't been any services rendered in well over a month. My biggest question, Kevin, is if we assume Mr. Agia's position on this, how do we move forward to, to be assured that when schools reopen in the fall, are we going to be in full operational mode again with new contracts to set forth for the next several years? That's my biggest question.
Well, I, I, I think that was the, you know, the reason we got into this position or we got into this place was so that we could have that continuity of service so that when school did come back and, you know, come back online, that they, they, the companies have the drivers, have the personnel on staff in order to, to provide the service to us.
So when I'm looking at these numbers, I say, how did they arrive at such percentages? 75%, 58%, 78%? I don't, I don't understand. Maybe it's based on the size of their, their companies or how many employees they have to try to keep whole. Maybe it's based on that, but I don't think that's our responsibility. So I don't really know where to go. I'm going to keep attention, a close sense of attention to this, listen to my colleagues, listen to you and to Ken, and keep driving it forward. With that, I yield.
Mr. Costa, but I just have one quick question. At any time during the negotiations, did they produce documents showing you what they said we needed the money for, or did they just say?
They, they've provided, so, so everything that's in your packet here is what I've been provided for documentation so far. In many cases, they've said, they've just listed what their expenses are, but there's no dollars or anything associated with it. So that, you know, we've, they've said that, you know, these things make up a specific percentage, but-
It's nothing behind it.
That's, there's really nothing behind it.
Okay. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Almeida or Mr. Vachico or whomever's been leading the negotiations from our standpoint, what percentage did we rebut when they gave us these percentages that they wanted to pay us? What are we suggesting that we pay them?
I, I think we're looking for, you know, an actual, like, picture of what their actual costs are, to be fair. And, you know, we want to be sure that, you know, that the service is there and it's ready for September when the students are back, back in school. I, I, I don't know that there is a percentage because a lot of different percentages have been floating around, you know, at the state. So some districts have, you know, agreed to other percentages which I don't agree with, but, you know.
So let's not worry about, let's not worry about what other districts are doing, let's worry about what we're doing. So if you're telling me we went into this negotiation and said, okay, what are your expenses or what is, what is the percentage of, or amount of money you want us to pay you, and they gave it to us and we said, well, show us your expenses, and they said, well, we're not going to do that, and we said, okay, fine, we'll bring these numbers back to the school committee? That's not a negotiation. So what did we count? So when, when Amaral said 75%, am I going to come back and say, no, it's not going to be 75, our number is 40% or our number is 30%? Did that conversation happen or did someone just say, okay, great, thanks, we'll, we'll bring that back to the school committee?
In so many words, we asked them to go back and, you know, sharpen the pencil and, and bring forward some, you know, additional information, but we were essentially given the same information the second time around.
Okay. So I, I don't particularly agree with 0, because I think, I think there should be some payment made. I mean, I think in fairness to keeping their business solvent so that in the event that we go back to school in September, that we call upon these companies to provide services for us, they don't tell us, well, that's great, but we defaulted on all our bus loans and, and the vendor came and, and repossessed all our, our fleet, so we don't have buses to provide for you, and then we're stuck. But I also don't think that the negotiation should have been, tell us what your expenses are, we can work with you, and they say, okay, well, 75% of the contract. We said, okay, we'll bring that back to the school committee. Because I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not supporting the percentages that I see not supporting the percentages that I see in economy, and I'm also not ready to support zero percent, because I think there's got to be some percentage paid. And I think that number's got to come from you, Mr. Almeida, it's got to come from Mr. Vachico or the superintendent. If, if you want this committee to be part of these negotiations, then invite us to the table. If I heard this superintendent said, we're looking for some guidance on a percentage in the school committee tonight, I haven't been part of the discussion, so how do I propose what a percentage should look like?
Ten.
I'm sorry?
Ten.
Ten what?
Percent. Ten percent is what the superintendent said.
Proposing we pay the bus companies ten percent?
Yep.
Okay. So when we dispose of Aguiar's motion, we'll see if there's a flavor for a motion for ten percent. With that, I yield.
Mimi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Are they, are they basically denying us the documentation that you're asking for, Kevin? Or have you not gone back with this conversation again? You asked for the documentation, and they not give it to us? Are there overhead?
So, so these companies, we know they have, they have costs and they got, they got their expenses, but, you know, supplying a list of expenses versus supplying what it actually costs are two totally different things. And so, you know, we've, we've been given what their, you know, what their supposed expenses are, we just don't know what the actual cost is. It's not something that's very easy to, to formulate.
Who's, who's moving forward with this? Is this superintendent, is this you, Kevin?
Well, I've been, I've been part of the discussions with the groups on the transportation contracts. I haven't, I haven't come forward saying that this is what we're paying or, or proposing to do. I've just gone forward, listened, see what kind of everybody's kind of feedback is, and, you know, everybody's contracts are different, so, you know, there's different costs associated with everything, so.
Now, I just heard the superintendent say ten percent. Are we going to go ten percent across the board to all of these contracts, or are we going to go individually right now? Move forward.
So in a negotiation, they've laid a number down, we're ready to lay a number down. School committee votes on that number, we'll be good to go. I mean, you could, Mr. Aguiar said zero. I've heard, I'm trying to find some, I've heard other conversations from members of the committee, I'm trying to find some common ground here so we can get something done. It's awkward having to do this in public session, but this is the reality.
Yeah, okay. Hold on. Mimi, you done?
I do. I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Aguiar?
So I agree with the superintendent that this really is an awkward situation to be negotiating something like this in a public session, but the open meeting law requires us to do certain things. The reason why I want to put the zero or a ten percent, something very low, is because that's going to get the bus companies to say, wait a minute, we have expenses that are higher than this. If you're telling me we're only going to pay you zero or ten percent, we're going to sue you and threaten litigation. At that point, once they do that, it no longer becomes an open session discussion, from what I understand. We can have that discussion in executive session, which is where most negotiations happen. This is kind of crazy to be doing this out public, which is the reason why I went a little over the edge to say, we're going to go to zero. But the point of the matter is, is until we get some kind of, like, we're telling you we're not paying you, they're telling us they're going to pay you, we're going to sue you, then we can talk about it in an executive session, which is the goal, to get in and we can have real, honest discussions, because we shouldn't have these bus companies giving their information to the public and everything else. Like, that's not really okay either. So to protect them, to protect us, I think we need to just go hardcore number. If they litigate it and they say, no, we're going to take you to the court, we're going to sue you, and I believe that, go into an executive session at that point. If that's the case, that's what we should get to. Maybe we need to ask Attorney Assad if that is in fact the case, and if it is, then we can move this along a lot quicker, I think.
All right. I told Josh he'd go next, then Mark, then Attorney Assad. Is that okay? Go ahead, Josh.
All right. A number of questions. One was going to be about executive session. I mean, should we be talking about this out in the open? Can we discuss the number we're going to agree on in executive session later, if it is going to be in negotiation? Or is that something?
You're up earlier, Bruce. Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mark.
Just, just address it.
No, I, anyway.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Bruce?
Yeah, the, there is a, there's a problem with the open meeting law. With the open meeting law, it does not allow you to go into executive session on a situation like this. It makes absolutely no, no sense whatsoever to discuss something like this in open session. However, the, the open meeting law doesn't provide for the executive session. The only way a matter like this could get into executive session, if it's a matter with respect to imminent litigation, all litigation itself. Once that happens, then it is appropriate for us to go into executive session to discuss the matter and to discuss whether we want to pursue the litigation or whether we want to compromise it, whatever the, the wish of the committee is. Right now, to put a figure on the table doesn't make much sense, because right now, it is not, that would not be a negotiation, it's something just placing a figure out for them to say yes or no to. And there's no real direction for the committee at that, at that point in time. This is especially important because it, it sounds to me as if they are not forthcoming in the information that this committee needs to make an informed decision. So I think it has to go to the next step. I think that any amount of money you put on, on the table, including zero, would probably get us there. It makes no sense at all to, to say yes to a figure when you don't have the backup information that you trust to make an informed decision.
Mr. Hetzler, and then Mr. Costa.
So I have a number of other questions, and that, you know, alludes to what the attorney's saying, and we don't have the information we need, you know, documentation, bill statements. I mean, again, I want to help these companies stay open during this time, but we don't know if they're receiving state or federal help right now, right? We don't know if their vendors are saying, hey, we'll give you a break on your bills until school's back in session, we're going to give everybody a six-month extension. So we don't know exactly what's going on in the day-to-day at these bus companies, but I do want to help them in some way. And at the end of the day, doesn't this become a city council matter? So we can vote on anything we want, but who actually has the decision to pay them? We can come up with what we think we want to give them, but doesn't the city council have to sign off on it?
It's a good question. The, as a matter of fact, I have on the notes here, as this was being discussed, to look at the contract, and also, it's the, the city council that has put forward the money through the city budget for services. And there are no services since, since mid-March. So it is a question that we would have to discuss along with the corporation council to determine, first of all, a review of what the contract says in terms of amendment, who has control. The second will be a discussion with the corporation council to see what role, if any, that the city council would play in this, and the mayor.
And my last comment will be, based on what Attorney Assad just said, saying it's not worth putting a number on the table at this time, I'm going to be a no vote on any number we talk about tonight. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Costa?
Just quickly, I would just say that my stance is we make a open hearing, this is amended, that Attorney Assad speak with the corporation council and also the city council president with respect to their role in it, and that negotiations continue to occur. But I can't emphasize that no payments be made until, you know, decisions are made as to whether or not this is the school committee's decision to vote on, or whether it's the city council's vote. And that may just prolong the discussion long enough to have the vendor decide to take action and litigate it, and then we'll decide how we want to proceed going forward and negotiate. But if, if that's their position, that those are the percentages, that's fine. But I, I would make a, a request that no payments be made and that Attorney Assad speak with corporation council and the city council find out who's, who's governing body that should be involved in terms of a role in the final authorization or percentage, if any, to pay the vendors. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Aguiar?
I don't see any reason why the city council should be involved at this point. It's our contract. So that they approved the contract, it came to the school department. So if the city council has the ability in this situation to get involved, that would mean that they could get involved halfway through the school year and say, oh, by the way, we're short money, you're going to come in and take the money off the school committee contract that you signed. Doesn't make any sense. I think we can look at it all well. But our attorney just stated that until this gets into a litigation, that we can talk about this in executive session. This is going to continue to go on. So I'm asking for your vote for the zero percent to send a message that basically, in essence, we're not paying any vendors. That's the same motion this committee made thirty days ago, to not pay any vendors. So all I'm asking for is that we all say zero to send a message, and that they can watch the meeting and see that that means maybe we'll negotiate it. If they want to litigate it, they've got to start the litigation. Attorney Assad just said, as our lead negotiator, this is what we need to do to get us in executive session. We could do that in two weeks, three weeks. The longer you let this wait and continue to go on, now we're going to be into June. The next item is to award contracts for, for bus vendors. So we're going to get the current year straightened out before we even start to worry about who's going to get what for next year. So all I'm asking is just, if we all vote yes for this, they're going to go with it, they're going to get, see it and say, uh-oh, we better litigate, and we get an executive session where this belongs. This is crazy to have this discussion in open session. With that, I yield.
Josh?
Yeah, just, I guess, my final comment hopefully on this topic. We, I just, zero's not going to be where we land, right? Because we want to help them out. I think we all do, right? Help them out on some level, help keep their business afloat so they're there for us in the future, which is why when I initially spoke on it, I referenced twenty, maybe thirty, something low, right? But not zero, which is why I don't want to support zero at all. You know, I might support a number a little bit higher than that, closer to what I'm thinking, but they, they need something to sustain their businesses from us, right? And we want them to be there for us moving forward. We all know that. So I think we're all on the same page. I just don't know if the vote is even necessary. So with that, I yield.
We have a motion, a second, Deb?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm just going to say, I, I, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at zero as our starting point. I, I don't, I don't, I don't favor ending up at zero. I don't believe anybody on the committee that votes for this favors ending up at zero. These people do have some legitimate costs, but until they come to the table with at least an honest representation of those costs, then there's nothing wrong with zero. If they want to sit down and say, we didn't get any additional federal grants, we didn't put all our people on, on workman's comp, we didn't, we didn't cancel our insurance for comprehensive because the, the buses are all in the yard, those are legitimate things, but that's what I want to see. So I have no problem with voting for zero with the hope that it pushes negotiations on so that at least before, and I have no favor of going to court either. I'd rather have somebody come in with a folder like this and say, these are my expenses. And that's what I think zero will push them to, and I'll vote for it. And if, if it doesn't, and I'm, I am a hundred percent with my colleague, Josh, I don't want to end up there. I think that would really lead to chaos in the bus system in Fall River, but I also want them to be open and honest with us going forward. And that's all I'm going to say on it. Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Aguiar?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up, number ten, a discussion and vote to approve to award a five-year transportation contract IFB 2028 Category A Typical Yellow Buses, Category B minus In-District Special Education Yellow Buses, Category C minus McKinney-Vento Van Transportation, and Category D minus Athletic and Activities for the Fall River Public Schools as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Go ahead, Ken, thanks.
Okay. So basically, the, the first required vote, successful bidder, was in Category One, or Category A, I'm sorry, Alternative One, and that was for typical bus service, regular ed. All of the items were applied to. One item that was omitted is not a material defect. And the, after all of our due diligence, the bid for Transportation IFB 2028 for Category A Regular Ed should be awarded to Amaral Bus Company on a bid of not to exceed
Point of vote, are we to vote on these individually?
Yes, please.
Right. So I make a motion, we approve Category A Amaral Bus Company IFB for transportation.
Second. Any discussion?
One quick.
Mr. Aguiar?
I think I read in, in there something about if there's a bond for the first year of the five, and then that just gets added to the, to the contract. Is that typical language? Is that in all of the?
It should be in all of our pieces, yes.
What I'm saying, so that's typical, that we would just add the amount of the bond for that one year to the contract?
Yes.
That's a, that's not new to this particular piece?
No.
Every five-year contract has the first year bonded and then, because it's like fifty thousand or something. It's pretty good money.
Yes.
But it gets added, and that's typical.
Exactly.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Anything further? We'll do this one piece at a time? Yes. Do I have a motion, a second, Deb?
Yes, you do.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aguiar?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Go ahead, Ken.
Next, Category, Category B In-District Special Ed Transportation. Our review submission by Braga Transportation, Items One through Four were provided. Item Five was omitted, but again, not a material defect in the bid. There was a couple of other items, a corporation certificate, that certificate of standing was not, was requested and has not been provided. And a few other items, Item Number Six Required Letters of Reference were not provided. References were not all of school districts as required by the individual schools and were not for current contracts. Reference Number Seven, I'm sorry, Number Seven references were provided, however, not from current contract of ten vehicles or more. And Item Number Eight, Letter of Bonding Ability was not included. Item Number Nine, based on the admissions, on the specifications, we requested financial, requested audited financial statements for the past three years, current year, in order to determine the financial capability of performing the work under this bid. Only financial statements 2017, 2018 were provided. With this information, we were unable to determine whether or not Braga was, had the financial ability to perform the services required under these specifications. Based on that, we determined that Braga Transportation was not responsive and not responsible bidder according to the criteria of the specifications. Moving on to the second bidder, Whaling City, all items were provided with the exception of, I'm sorry, all, all items were provided, required letters, bonding ability, all bids met requirements. We reviewed the financial statements provided, bid submissions to eighteen, to nineteen, and as of March 2020, based on our analysis and independent accountant's review report, we have determined that the Whaling City financial ability to continue, ability to continue to provide the services specified, references were generally very good to excellent. Based on the determination, Whaling City was both responsive and responsible. However, the Whaling City bid was significant, bid cost significantly and exceeds the amount budgeted, which we, our own budget number. And therefore, I am requesting that the committee reject the bids in this category, and we go out for rebid.
Any discussion? Mr. Hetzler?
I was going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to reject the Category B bid and put it out for rebid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Aguiar?
So the, the number was actually really low, the bid, compared to the second bidder. There was a pretty substantial amount of money.
Yes, close to five hundred thousand.
And typically, the low bidder, I think we all would agree, should get the, the bid if all these other pieces are done.
Yes.
My concern is just that that number was really good, and we, if we do rebid, are we making anything to try to get more, either the same people or more people to make it at least the same or easier to get some of this documentation?
So we will, so we will make some adjustments in the bid process. The bid document will look different. There will be some changes in the bid document, hopefully to entice other bidders to be engaged in the, in the process.
Right. I mean, I never want to have anybody, especially a company from Fall River that's done work before, not get a bid. But these, we really don't have a choice at this point, but I would encourage that company to rebid with all the proper documentation so that if they are the low bidder, we can award it as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second to reject. Deb?
Mr. Aguiar?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Our third one is Category C McKinney-Vento Van Transportation.
So McKinney, McKinney-Vento Van Trans- So McKinney, McKinney-Vento van transportation, in last, in the last round of contracts bidding process, this was bid with 70 vans. So in order to, to accommodate and, and follow the procurement of 30B, we needed to separate that out of the special ed contract, and therefore allow us to negotiate the special ed contract with the current provider. And we are, we have a signed contract for next year already, for five years, for the 7D bus transportation in and out of district. So this item here now was, was a standalone item, it was bid as a separate, and we ran into some of the same issues on this particular bid in category C, as we did in category B. The low bidder was by PN Transportation. Items one through four were provided. Item five was omitted. However, our, our review of the corporation reports filing indicated that they were not in compliance and were presumably not in good standing at the time of the bid, which is a material defect. Their annually, their annual report was subsequently filed on April 29th, after the bid, at 2:20 PM. Corporation certificate of standing was requested and subsequently received on April 29th, after the bid. Required letters of reference were not provided, another material defect. References were provided, however, not for current contractors of 10-plus vehicles, as Also, a letter of bonding ability was included, based upon the omissions and pursuant to section 10 dash 2 of the items that were omitted. We are saying that PN Transportation was not responsive and responsible bidder, according to the criteria of the specifications. Moving on to the next contractor, the submission was by Tremblay's Bus. Tremblay's Bus had all required items, with the exception of six, which was a letter of rest, required letters of reference were provided, 2018, not a material defect. Appropriate current references were provided, letter of bonding ability was there. After reviewing the financial statements, 16, 17, 18, subsequently, and 2019, November 2019, financial statements, based upon the analysis, Tremblay's has the financial ability to continue and provide services, references were generally very good and excellent. Based on proceeding, we determined that Tremblay's Bus was both responsive and responsible. Therefore, we would like to award the contract to McKinney, of the McKinney-Vento, category C van transportation, with monitors, to Tremblay Bus for $1,814,032.80.
Make a motion, we award the contract to Tremblay's for category C.
Second.
Any further discussion? Deb?
So the one, is if you add that to the five, or whatever they had gotten before, for the, is this all, all of these amounts, do they add up to what we budgeted, roughly? Like, are they fitting within the...
They are fitting within our budget, with the exception of the outlier that we just...
So this $100,000 is, fits within the...
Yes.
The number. Does it also apply to, if we vote for this, then they become the lowest bidder, that, like we did before, that you can negotiate with the lowest bidder at that point? You remember how, like, the, over the summer, we had the other issue going on?
Yes. So if there's, if there is a situation, we need to do it before the contract is executed. So there's a, you're, you're the awarding authority, so you will be referring that to city council. In the meantime, we will negotiate that piece.
To see if there's any play in that, to...
Exactly. Yes.
Based on this.
Yes.
Yeah. With that, I, I supported it, it's, you know, we do it for one person, we've got to do it for the other, be consistent, so with that, I yield.
Attorney Assad?
Yes. Just wanted to, to make mention to the committee, and also with respect to the, the vote, that vote to approve the, the contract is subject to the city council approval of a five-year contract, as well as the execution of the contract with the mayor's signature and corporation council. This would be on both category C and also category A, which is the Amaral Bus Contract.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
And finally, category D?
Category D, athletic and activity bus. All items, with the exception of item five, was provided. Number five is a non-material defect. And based on all of the information provided, we are looking to award the contract to Fisher Bus Company for...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Corey.
I'm just curious as to what that contract looks like, where we're at right now with the shutdown of Spring Sports. Is that money held, or is it transferred into next year's budget?
So those items, this would not be one of those cases. With field trips, we have no, we have no request from that company for a payment as of yet. So as of right now, there is no request whatsoever.
It's sort of like a status quo?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
We have a number of resignations and a few...
Motion.
Second.
Anybody have any new business which...
On the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, guys. Go ahead. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
What's this on, the new information?
No, the, uh, the appointments and the...
Keep on file.
To file the appointments.
Yeah, I just thought it was always just something we do. I don't think we take votes on this.
I didn't know we did that either.
Yeah, we vote.
Okay.
Sure. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Agia?
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Do we have any new business to come before the committee tonight? Bearing none? Do we have a reason for executive session?
We do. Mr. Chair, at your request, I will recite them.
Please.
First, match general law, chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the April 13, 2020, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Second, match general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, including workers' compensation case regarding Donna Freitas, Department of Industrial Accidents Board number 11149-16. Also, workers' compensation case regarding Rory Burnier, Department of Industrial Accidents Board number 2284-18. And workers' compensation case regarding Lisa Martin, Department of Industrial Accidents Board number 24932-19. Also, match general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, match general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Fall River School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Fall River Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, match general law, chapter 38, section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and/or con, conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Scott Cabral, Director of Technology Infrastructure. We would reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Motion for executive session?
Second.
Seconded. Is there a quorum, Mr.?
Yep.
Yes. One, two, three, four. We have four. We have four.
Roll call.
Wait, one, two, yeah, four.
Three, four.
We do have, we do have a quorum.
So is there a motion made and seconded?
Yep.
Yes, there was.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to come back in session? Roll call, please, Deb.